It really does.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, are we on, Emma?
Oh, you're on. I can see that we have some attendees joining us, so I keep going.
Good. All right, everyone, this meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on May 1st, 2020, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board of the Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, Jersey, on May 1st, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Phil, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I will. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Borough Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Burrell Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz? Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair?
Here.
Okay. Well, believe it or not, this is our fourth virtual Zoom council meeting. For those of you who are tuning in with us through your computers or your phones, I thank you for being a part of this meeting. A recording of the proceedings will be made available via HPTV following the meeting. At this point, I'm going to ask for our council reports, and I'll start with Councilman Hale, you come up first on my screen.
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, we had the first version of the Farmer's Market, the drive-by Farmer's Market, and by all accounts, it went quite well. So it'll be going again next week. There were about seven vendors, there's online ordering, and you drive up and pick up your food. And if you go to Main Street Highland Park's website, there'll be instructions about ordering and instructions about the procedures. So it looks like we're off to a good start, and I'd encourage everybody to keep going out to the Farmer's Market. That's all I have.
Thank you. I actually had the chance to participate in the Farmer's Market myself last week, and it seemed to go very smoothly. The police and the SERC members, volunteers that were working there, seemed to have everything really well coordinated. So please give Rebecca and Javier a big thank you. Okay, Councilman Fine, you're up next.
I do not have a report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, you're next.
Just want to report that, as everyone is aware, that the parks are open for everyone to use. Donaldson Park is open, and we did not have any incident. People followed very much the instruction that was laid out by the governor. The social distance was in place. We did receive phone calls, however, people not knowing that they're family members, and they were complaining that people weren't keeping social distancing. When the police checked, they were all members of families. And one of the other complaints that we received quite a bit is that people are not disposing of their mask and their gloves appropriately. So I would like to encourage everyone to please use the waste baskets to dispose of your gloves and your mask. Bring it home, when you get home, you can dispose of it there, but please use the trash receptacles to make that dispose, because it makes the place very untidy. When you go and you see the area, it's all littered with gloves and masks. So I implore you all to please follow those. And another thing with gloves and with the mask, the face mask, the police department has seen uptick in phone calls where people are calling in that people are not wearing face masks. It's a strong suggestion that they wear the face mask. However, the police cannot enforce people to wear the face mask if they choose not to. But I would strongly encourage that everyone do wear the face mask, and the police cannot make persons who don't want to wear the mask, wear the mask. It's for everyone's safety that you do so. I want to give a special thanks to the EMT that came in from Kansas to help us out last week. They provided us a whole week of service. While they were here, they answered eight ambulance calls, and it was a tremendous help, not just to us here in Highland Park and to our residents, but to the area hospitals as well. So they were a great source of support for us here in Highland Park. And they left on Friday, and we wish them well and to get home and to get back to their families. We greatly appreciate everything that they've provided for us. And then, last but not least, I want to thank the SERC team for all the work that they have done with not only preparing food for the food pantry or preparing meals or helping out the pantry, but for everything that they have done from Farmer's Market, preparing meals, and helping with community services, things that they may need from buying groceries. So thank you so much, the members of the SERC team, and that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, just a few on the food pantry. First, we'd like to thank the Highland Park Arts Collective for their mass competition that they're currently running. The proceeds from that competition will all 100% go to the food pantry. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And also, all of the residents that emailed myself, that emailed the mayor, that emailed the chair for the food pantry, just reaching out, wanting to give monetary donations, wanted to still drop off food. We're super appreciative of you thinking of us in this time, and our residents really need it. We do have an Amazon wishlist, since we're no longer accepting donations. And when you go on Amazon, it's HPCFP wishlist. And then you can also electronically send gift cards to highlandparkfoodpantry@gmail.com. And it's just a way for us, because we're limiting volunteers at this time as well for packing and getting the distributing the food to our clients. So thank you, thank you so much. I've been getting like a lot of requests and people that just want to donate, so thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you. And Council President Phil George? Oh, I'm sorry, before you start, I see Councilwoman Foster Dublin raising her hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot, and this is a very important one, that last Friday, the Chinese Association of Highland Park, they gave us a huge donation, not only monetary, they gave a check of $2,000 for the food pantry, but they gave us the gloves, mask, and the PPE protective clothing. And they have been instrumental in helping us here in all facets of public safety in Highland Park. And they donated to us and to our fire, police, our first aid, our Borough Hall. So they have been a huge help to us in this fight with the donation. And there's an article that's written by Harry that should be going out soon, so everybody can see the volumes of stuff that they have been instrumental in securing and to help announce their community as well. And I just want to say thank you so much to the Chinese community of Highland Park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Elsie. Okay, Council President, do you have a report? Can't hear you, Phil. Phil?
Okay. Sorry about that. Just a brief report. It's already been circulated, but for reasons of safety as well as the additional tasks taken on by DPW during the emergency, the bulk trash scheduled for May has been postponed indefinitely. Once things begin to be a little less restrictive, we will be rescheduling it, so hopefully be able to accomplish it soon. The school tree planting on the project that's been approved in the works for a year, as well as the street tree plantings, are scheduled to begin tomorrow, which is a hopeful sign for the spring. Councilwoman Foster Dublin mentioned that the county parks are open and to please observe the social distancing, and please remember to wear PPE, even though it's not mandatory. Some of the things that aren't mandatory are the only way we're going to peak this emergency and get through it. I'd like to add that the native plant sanctuary and the Meadows Trail are also open. There was some confusion about the trail over the weekend because the barriers did not get taken down. I went there and took them down myself, so I know that it's open. And while I was there, there were four or five people not doing social distancing. I would remind you, some benchmarks just briefly on my report. The water sewer, we've gotten the revised RFPs. Hopefully, we'll have Public Works hopefully reschedule the meeting from the third week to next week to review that, and there is a review session scheduled for late next week as well. On the sidewalk project, I have the third part of the SOP development about half written. I hope to be able to get that to Public Works for their review as well. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No, I don't think so. I think I'll save my voice for the budget part.
Okay. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I do have just a couple of things I want to talk about. So the first part of my report has to do with the census, which is extremely important to the municipality. As of past weekend, only 64% of Highland Park's residents have pleaded and responded to the census. Unless we make a dramatic progress, we're going to, we stand to lose out on over $1 million in federal and state funding. That's why we're asking every Highland Park resident to call five people who can be counted on to fill out their census. If you call five of your friends and check on how they're doing, please also remind them to go online and fill out their census data. They can find it at my2020census.gov. You'll find everything you need at this link, including suggestions for scripts in English and Spanish. So please, it's very important. Once they agree, forward this email. We have an email available that you can find on a posting on our Facebook page. And find that and ask them to email it around to five friends if they don't want to make any calls. With this simple action, you'll be able to protect millions of dollars a year in government grants that support our police department, our first aid squad, the food bank, free and reduced student lunches, special needs programming, the senior center programming, senior activities, children's programming at the teen center, drama camp, the chess club, summer camp at Highland Park High School, summer day trips, the Highland Park Street Fair, Arts Commission, Farmer's Market, et cetera. Please, it's extremely important to get as many Highland Park residents to register for the census. Finally, I've spent a lot of time over the last months thanking so many of our volunteers for going above and beyond in what they've been doing to help all our residents through this coronavirus situation. I do want to take a moment now to thank our Borough employees also for all the work they've put in during this time. I can't think of how we would have been able to get through with some of the programming that has become so crucial without the help of our Borough Administrator, her assistant, the Director of the Teen Center, Ashton Burrell, the Police Department, our community service personnel, and so many more of the people that are working day in and day out, whether at Borough Hall or from home, to ensure that we get through this coronavirus situation as well as we possibly can. And so, again, I want to thank all our volunteers, but also the personnel that has been coming in and helping us all pull this thing together. Okay. It's now time for our first public discussion session. The total time for this session is 21 minutes, three minutes per person. Please limit your comments during this session to items that are on the agenda. We will have a second session later on, where you can bring up anything you want. The Borough Administrator will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone, or if you are on a computer or smart device, select the Raise Hand button in the application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your name and your address. And again, if you'd like to speak, this is for topics that are on the agenda, please press *9 or raise your hand. Borough Administrator, is there anyone wanting to speak?
Right now, I don't see anybody raising their hand, although the clerk reported, oh, hold on. The clerk reported to me that one person had contacted her in advance of the meeting, interested in registering as another way. So is Charlie Cravatil on this call right now? If so, you have to press *9 or raise your hand. I'm going to call on the person, I got a couple of hands, Mayor. I'm going to call on the person whose phone ends in 9697. I'm going to try.
Good evening. It is Charlie Cravatil.
Okay.
Yes.
I guessed correctly.
Good evening.
Hi, Charlie. Could you?
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Could you please give us your address?
Certainly. I live in New Brunswick on Sedam Street here. I wanted to speak at the later public session, not on the agenda items.
Oh, okay. All right, so hang around if you don't mind.
I see there's someone else who comes up as Andrea Alexander. Go ahead and say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everybody. This is Jeff Pearlman, 116. Andrea, it's her computer. So for the record, Jeff Pearlman, 116 North Third Avenue, Highland Park, Jersey. Just wanted to follow up on an email I sent over the weekend regarding open streets, or really the concept as weather is warming up and people need to get out and exercise, that there's a need to really provide more pedestrian access and bicycle access to our streets, our local streets. And it's a public health need, and it's been documented. And so there's cities, towns across the country, around the globe, actually, that are doing this. They're shutting their streets down, or they're taking over, they're extending the curbs, or just slowing streets, putting temporary barriers so that people can feel free to bike ride or walk in the streets. So I understand that the Borough is working on taking the 5K route and turning that into some sort of open street, or you know, that's one way to call it, an open street, to allow pedestrians and cyclists to move around. It's a great start. I think more can and should be done. And I think a couple of ways to accomplish that. One would be to use our adopted bike and pedestrian plan that we had DOT and a consultant do for us last year, and we adopted it as part of our master plan. It's a vetted plan, it's a plan we can implement, and implement very quickly. And also, I think that as we think about foregrounding the bike-ped plan to help with this issue, that we also continue to reach out to our stakeholders, our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, to make sure that not just the north side is getting these open streets, but that the south side and the triangle and all parts of the Borough where there's a need, that we accomplish this. So I just wanted to put that out there, and maybe just get some committee, you know, council response. And I'll mute myself. I don't know how to mute myself, whatever.
Emma, can you mute?
Thank you very much, Jeff. So a couple of things, you are absolutely correct that Council President Phil George has been working on a 5K sort of situation during this COVID period. And I've also spoken with the Borough Administrator, who is going to be meeting with the SWAC Safe Walking and Cycling Committee members to talk about incorporating some of what was done within the plan here as well. So I'm going to ask first Council President George to respond about the 5K route, and Borough Administrator Hovair to talk a little about the upcoming discussion with SWAC. Councilman George? Got to put on your sound.
Yes, what we've been looking at, and we are going to have more discussions. The Borough Administrator and I had spoken the other day about, number one, scheduling public works, hopefully accelerating them so we can possibly have a recommendation for the next meeting and get things going as soon as possible, if not sooner. Is to mimic the 5K route for everyone to walk, cycle, or run. Not that anybody necessarily needs it, but it gives a kind of an imprimatur and a recommendation that here's a route that everybody can follow. We were thinking of, you know, we could have a list of people that have completed it in order to encourage people to do it and make it a little more organized. We have some more discussions to do. I've spoken with Chief Abrams several times about some of the safety concerns with that. We also have the co-chair of Safe Walking and Cycling involved in the discussion, so hopefully they'll be ongoing. With regard to some of the additional recommendations that are from the grant process that were incorporated into the master plan, the Borough Administrator and I haven't had a chance to discuss those yet. We are going to have a quote "sit-down" by conference call, hopefully in the next couple of days, to be able to discuss the details of this more and hopefully have Chief Abrams involved in that discussion.
Thank you. And Borough Administrator, do you have anything to add to that?
Not too much. Phil covered most of it. I would add, I did trade emails with Jeff. I was going to pick his brain because he does have some area of expertise in this area. And it was what prompted me in part to reach out to Safe Walking to see how, if, we didn't predict any road closures in the bike-ped plan, but we certainly should consider spreading out the routes throughout town. I thought that was a very good idea. So with that, try to think through that and any challenges the 5K may pose. I don't know if we're talking road closures or just suggested routes. Those are all things that the council is going to have to weigh in on, and obviously, public safety, before we move forward with any of that. So, yes, so, yes, we have lots of ideas. We got to sort through them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that?
Yeah, we have a couple more hands up. I'm going to ask the person whose phone number ends 5406 to say their name and their address, please, and then make their comment.
Hi, I'm just going to wait for the later portion.
Okay, please, yeah, keep your hand down until then. It looks like I might have one more hand. I believe Vardaro is the last name up on my screen. Please state your name and address.
This is Jeff Vardaro. I live on Main Street. I spend all my time on Main Street, actually, now. I just wanted to echo some of what Jeff Pearlman, my neighbor, just mentioned. And I did want to get a little bit of clarification from what Council President George said, because it sounds like this, what I had understood, I guess, from some email exchanges with Jeff Pearlman was that maybe the 5K route would be a road closure plan so that people could use the roads more clearly. And then, when Council President George spoke, I couldn't tell whether that's just more of something to encourage people to get out and walk or run along the 5K route. Is it going to be a road closure that you're thinking of?
We are not planning it to be a road closure at the present time. We have, I've had preliminary conversations with the chief, and it seems that it would be quite a monumental task, quite honestly, to close it even for any more than the, when it's normally closed. As you know, parts of the route are closed during the actual 5K. It lasts about two, two and a half hours, and it's quite a lot of work. So that's not technically in the works. There are some other ideas that we've very loosely tossed around about possibly having a road closure that runs toward the parks, but that is not gelled yet at this time.
Okay, I mean, I just want to echo what Jeff said. I mean, the, you know, some of us in town have big yards and things where kids can run around and play, but for the rest of people, I mean, even just getting to the parks, particularly if you're somebody who's high-risk and you need, you know, a lot of space from other people right now. The sidewalks in town are narrow. There's oftentimes a lot of people going in a lot of different directions. I know even just walking around, I've had to duck into the street here and there to avoid people. We, you know, there are a lot of people around the country, a lot of municipalities who are facing these same things, pretty much every municipality. And time is of the essence, and I think these discussions need to get more serious, and we need to start talking about road closures, whether it's during certain time periods or, you know, just on a limited basis. But it needs to get more serious, and it needs to get more than just encouraging people to have recreation, giving people an opportunity to actually use the public streets for recreation and play and running and walking and biking. And it sounds, from what Jeff said, that there's a plan that we could use that's pretty much shovel-ready and should be put into effect. So I'd appreciate more action on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I think most of us are in agreement with you, and that's part of the reason why the Safe Walking and Cycling Team is going to be meeting with Terry and Phil in a day or two. Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, I see no other hands raised.
Okay, fine, then we're going to move on. Okay. Clerk, could you report on the resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations?
You just need a motion on that, no report.
Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the, or reject the emergency temporary appropriations?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, Clerk, could you please report on the introduction of the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Calendar-year ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the 2020 municipal budget and tax resolution for consideration of passage on first reading by title? and Tax Resolution for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title?
Okay. Be resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year 2020. Be further resolved that said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of May 22, 2020. The governing body of the Borough of Highland Park does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year 2020. General appropriations, appropriations within caps for municipal purposes, $13,596,839. Appropriations excluded from caps for municipal purposes, $3,089,262.88. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $200,000. Total general appropriations, $16,886,101.88. Less anticipated revenues other than current property taxes of $3,425,527.73. Difference, amount to be raised by taxes for supporting the municipal budget, $12,925,562.81. Minimum library tax, $535,011.34. Total water and sewer utility appropriations, $4,984,767.21. Notices hereby given that the budget and tax resolution to be approved by the mayor and council on May 5, 2020. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be on Tuesday, June 9, 2020, at 7:00, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2020 may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant, pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, this meeting will be held by means of the use of electronic communications equipment. The public may participate by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 and entering in webinar ID 828-5971-5633, or by computer smart device via the following link, https://us02web.zoom.us/j/828-597-15633.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Now, before I call for a motion on the first reading of the budget, I'm inviting the Borough Administrator to give a short presentation on the 2020 budget. Just as a reminder, there is a second public comment session later in the meeting where members of the public can ask questions and other comments. And so Borough Administrator, would you like to begin the presentation?
Thank you, but I see Matt, Councilman Hale is waving his hand around vigorously, so I'll let him.
I just, can you, could I ask Joan to, to repeat the day of the, the, the meeting that she announced, the budget hearing, the date and the time again, just so, I, I didn't, I didn't quite hear it, so.
June 9, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And all of those, that, that complicated URL is available up on our website, as is the phone number and all that, so you didn't have to quickly write down what she just read. So, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take a little time to walk through the budget that's being introduced tonight. As you said, we'll have some time for questions. I'm fortunate to also have on this, although you can't see her, she's here, Lori Majeski from our Finance Department, who is integral in pulling all these figures together and working through the budget with me these many weeks. And so I may call on her if I, I need it or during any questions that may come up. So just so the public's aware that we have a member from the Finance Department. So with that, I'll just jump in. I'm going to attempt a share screen because I have some slides I'd like to share. And hopefully everybody who's on a computer can see them, and I will try to describe as I go to my best ability. So can, can someone from council just nod and tell me this, they can see my screen? Okay, okay, thank you. And I'm going to, just for now, minimize. So I'm going to just jump right in and, and blast you all with oops and fast forward, sorry, my slides. Okay, so, so this is pretty much the big picture in a pie chart. If you want to think about it, the pie chart is the total amount that we're raising with the tax dollars, and that comes to $48,967.35. And that would include the schools, of which 61% of the tax dollars go toward our, our, our primary, our elementary, middle school and high school. That's 61%. Municipal portion is 27%. The county is 10, excuse me, percent, and I'm going to talk a little more about municipal, so I'm not going to go there just yet. That includes public parks, which we talked about earlier, county roads, the sheriff and other things like that, as well as a 1%, 1% going to the county open space fund that we hope to take advantage of later this year. And lastly, there is a statutory minimum requirement for funding the public library. That amount, as the clerk reported, was $535,011.34. And, but our, that is not representative of total library funding with, which is in excess of a million. And again, I'll speak to that when we talk about the municipal budget. But again, kind of the thing I want people to keep in mind is what the borough, what, what, what we govern is 25, 27% of the overall tax bill, and that's just an important context to have. And just to, what does that look like when you look at kind of the average property tax bill, which in Highland Park is $12,128, I mean, $120? And I should mention, and I, I'm skipping ahead without my notes in front of me, that's based on an average assessment of $144,299, which I'll talk through a little bit more. But, but in essence, we're looking at about $1,000 a month for the average property tax bill to fund all these services. And you can see how that breaks out on a annual basis or on a monthly basis. For example, the schools, that comes to about $620 a month. The, for county, that's inclusive of the open space, about $112 per month. And then the library, just the statutory minimum, about $11 a month. And then lastly, but certainly not least, the municipal portion, which is about $266 a month. So just to give you that feel for, for, for how this plays out, and to drill down on that a little bit more, I have this slide, which essentially, I mentioned, I reported earlier, the amount to be raised in 2020 is $48,967,035. And, and last year, just to give you a sense, it was $48,190. That's a change, an increase of about $776,000. But you also have to look at total assessed value, because the way the tax rate is calculated, it's based on the total amount to be raised by the taxes, and then you divide that by the total assessed value of all properties in the borough. And so you can see from the next row that total assessed value is up by 10 million. So what that does is we had a rate of 8.4150 per hundred dollar assessed in 19, but that rate went down by a small margin to 8.3994 in 2020, in large part due to the fact that we had this added assessment, which increases the, the properties being taxed, which, which spreads the levy out further. So, which, which leads me to my next slide. We mentioned that average property tax bill being $12,120 in 2020. That number was higher in 19, so overall, with the budget that's being proposed, as well as the budgets from the county and the schools, we're looking at for the average property tax bill, a decrease of $22.41 in their, their annual bill. So essentially, it's flat.
And Borough Administrator, Terry, can you please explain how the assessed, how, how we were able to get more money in assessed values that, you know, what leads to that?
Sure. I mean, in, in essence, we had, I believe, I don't have the list in front of me, but this is something the tax assessor establishes, and we had some of our newer developments come on the tax rolls, ones that maybe hadn't had their certificate of occupancy yet. And so each, as those come online, some of those new developments, they add to the overall value of the borough. So that, thus, the, you know, the, everybody talks about ratables. It, it illustrates why having more ratables helps spread the costs. The trick is what kind of ratable and what kind of costs are associated with that. But in general, you can see that that increase helped offset the tax rate to the point where it's essentially a neutral rate this year. I hope that clear, is clear.
So basically, you're saying that the average homeowner or, or taxpayer is going to see a $22.41 decrease in their bill for 2020?
I mean, it'll be different, you know, yes, I mean, essentially, yes. Or basically, I don't know that people have their, their number memorized. I think they'll perceive it as being flat, if not lower than prior.
Okay.
Let me go to my next slide, and get my cheat sheets ready, and I, I suppose my joke was out, was my spoiler alert, because the next thing we're doing is I'm going to drill back into what we're responsible for, which is the municipal portion of this budget. So I'm going to go back into how that gets divvied up across the, oops, excuse me. I hope you can, I'm sorry about all these little things. I tried to full screen and it didn't work when I was practicing. Um, there it goes. So what I, basically, now we're talking about, this is the pie chart that when you look at the municipal budget, which is $16,886,101.88, as you can see from the top here, how does that get distributed across the different areas? And these are the categories we used last year, I thought, for consistency, we'd use them this year. We have, public safety makes up the largest piece of the pie, but that includes our police, our dispatch, our fire department, municipal court, prosecutor, you know, we have a lot of things that are included in, in that area. I would point out, we're not including pension and other benefits that go with salaries, that's categorized in, under statutory separately, but for example, to give you a sense of what that can cost, the typical, it could increase the, that percentage to 34% if I was inclusive of the PFRS pension component. So just to give you some illustration of that. Sorry, I just confused myself. Give me one moment. So, but that, basically, of that average assessment, that public safety money costs that person or that household about $77 a month, just to give you kind of order of magnitude what that piece of the pie is costing the average property. Public Works makes up 17%, that's inclusive of garbage pickup, recycling pickup, buildings and ground maintenance, all of those functions, road maintenance, snow plowing, all the salaries, overtime, anything like that would be charged to this area, and that makes up 17%. Or it comes, the average taxpayer, about $45 a month, just to kind of give you a, a way to think about it. General Service and Administration, to a large degree, is just about everything else that you can think of, you know, catch all, my administration department, finance, code official, code office, clerk's office, recreation and aging, economic development in all of our borough professionals, that's all in that 17% of the pie. That's inclusive in there, and that again is about $45 a month to the average tax assessment. And lastly, but certain, I, I'll come back, well, I could point out, we have the statutory requirements, as I mentioned, which make up 10%. Pension payments, social security, unemployment, all of those nondiscretionary items, insurance for health insurance, liability insurance, workers' compensation, again, a 10% piece of the pie, as well as capital improvements and debt service, another 10%. And then that leads me to the library, where we, again, as I mentioned earlier, is 7% of our budget, that's inclusive of the statutory minimum. And just to be clear, the borough matches that by just about 102% and to bring it closer to 1 million and change. So that's been a priority for the borough to support the public library over the years. So that gives you kind of the broad stroke for how the money is allocated out of the municipal budget. Any questions on that before I go to my next slide? I should have probably asked that before. Okay. I was trying to buy myself a moment to get a sip. So we have, to my next slide, it's the municipal budget snapshot, and I'm going to remove some of these pictures of you guys so I can see my screen. But total appropriations between 19 and 20 increased about $380,000. We're anticipating about $25,000 in additional non-tax revenue as part of this budget. But I would add, at this point, we've taken a fairly conservative approach to what kind of, uh, non-tax revenue to expect, in large part due to uncertainties around COVID-19 and how that's going to shake out in the economy. So we didn't, we didn't just say, oh, everything we got last year, we're going to get this year, despite the fact that we started this first quarter pretty strong on our, our non-tax revenue numbers. The amount to be raised by taxes is about an increase of $288,000. But again, as I tried to illustrate earlier, when we looked at the full picture of all schools, county, et cetera, due to their larger assessed value levels, as well as where the county and the schools came in with their budgets, the average household in Highland Park, for their municipal budget, I, I'm sorry, I got my thoughts wrong, the average household should see a decrease of $22.41% per year. However, for their municipal component, that 27% of the budget would potentially go up by $15 a year, about $1.25 a month. So I, I kind of jumbled my thoughts there, but if I could restate it, while the municipal portion of the budget went up, the overall tax bill is flat, if not a slight decrease, that $22.41 for the average assessment. So with that, I'd like to speak to why, why are appropriations up? And I just want to highlight some of the things that go up regardless of what's happening in the world, like COVID or other things. Outside of contractual salary increases and other sorts of contractual increases, I've just got a handful of items that, just to illustrate the kinds of things that go up. We had, to pay off debt, we had a $62,000 increase in debt payment that, from last year. Recycling is, we had to budget an additional $60,000, given the fact that we have the situation with uncertain recycling markets, and that's based on, frankly, last year's collection, which, given how much time people are spending at home, that number may be low because we're collecting more recycling than we have in the past, and we're not making money on it by and large. We've stormwater management, which is a regulatory requirement for all municipalities, there's $30,000 in the budget just to maintain our storm basins and catch basins, and also to repair the street sweeper is an additional $40,000 because we need that to do that. And as anybody's seen, it needs some repair. So, and then the last I've mentioned is, for emergency services, we brought somebody on board to help us manage our, our emergency department, which is an additional allocation of about $40,000. So I just rattled off items that kind of are whole numbers to illustrate, they come to more than 200,000 of that, 384, just to illustrate how easily it is to, how things can go up. That said, in light of COVID, in light of all the uncertainty, we are looking at our spending. We have and are developing plans as we track revenues. If there's, if we see problems, we have, we have identified items that we can forego if we need to, so that if we need to balance the budget at the end of the year, we can cancel some appropriations. Again, we don't, we're hoping we don't have to, but we have that plan, we're developing that plan as, as, as we go. But that's, that's how we've opted to, to handle this. So that covers that. I would like to quickly, I think my next slide is the water and sewer budget, so before I move off, any thoughts on that?
Well, I just want to mention at this point that- that later on, on the consent agenda, there is a resolution 52154 that the council will be voting on, which establishes budgetary guidelines during the coronavirus pandemic, which ties into some of the things that Terry just mentioned about bracing ourselves, being very, very conservative on everything that is non-COVID related, but also ties into what Terry was saying about constantly watching so that we can be prepared for any extraordinary shortfalls in revenues that are not predicted.
Okay. And then my last slide, it's a quick one, but it's really important. The water and sewer utility budget, as the clerk reported, 4.984 million is going there. The revenues are mainly the water and sewer rents is the word, term of art, but that's essentially water and sewer bills that people pay. That's what funds that department, by and large, as well as water sewer connection fees. As new developments come along, we do charge additional fees to connect into our system. Key appropriations, as in other departments, are employees and other expenses related to those. However, we anticipated a little less in employees in part, because we're, a bigger part of this budget is going toward that water and sewer operations contract that we're hoping to be able to award, that Phil mentioned earlier in his report. We budgeted for that here as well. Those rate increases that were approved in 2019, starting in 2020, are what are allowing us to be able to move forward with both the operations and maintenance contract, assuming we can resolve the RFP and award something, as well as the capital improvements that are necessary for the first phase of projects. And I also just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention something, because I don't think a lot of people are aware, 63% of this budget goes to two things, purchasing water and processing sewer water, basically what comes out. So, and those costs go up. And so that's something, we're working hard, and hopefully with our contract operator, if that moves forward, as hoped, we were going to work hard to find leaks, holes in the system to try to kind of save money and arrest losses where we can. But that just gives you a good sense of how much of this budget is for those really big items. It's a huge item of concern. So, and just to give you a broad stroke, I mentioned it again, I'm going to say it again. Oh, the award of the operations and maintenance contract has been a huge component of the 2020 operation. We've been working very closely with our utility consultant, our utility special counsel, to try to hopefully see this through. And if all goes well, we would, we hope to be up and running with a contract in July. That's all to be determined at future council meetings and subject to evaluation and legal review. But that's built into this budget. If something should change from that, well, we'll have to make an amendment to this budget, because we'll have to reallocate from other expenses back into salary and wages, just to put that on your radar. And then we have to stay vigilant with Water Quality Accountability Act compliance. These are serious regulations. They are getting more strict. And that's a big component of what we want this contract operator to help us stay compliant, but we will do that regardless of how that plays out. So that's budgeted for, as well as one of the key components in our early project in our capital program that's already been, money's already been authorized, is a borough-owned meter replacement program to complement the customer meter replacement program that we've already been working on as well. So I just wanted to give you some of the highlights. And there's a lot more to come in future meetings based on how this RFP process plays out. And with that, that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you, Terry. All right.
And I will cease my share screen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the 2020 municipal budget on first reading by title?
Don't move.
That's two of us.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor, one thing, I apologize for interrupting. I wanted to mention and forgot that my slides that I just showed, we will post on the website. So for anybody who's watching, or anybody who is unable to watch, or watches it on YouTube later, look for them on our website so that you'll have a chance to look at them and explore them before the hearing in June.
And additionally, this entire council meeting will be on HPTV?
Correct.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt item numbers 11 through 15?
14. Only 14.
Yeah, the grace period is a separate of consent.
Okay.
Also move.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Before I vote, I just want to highlight two of the resolutions. One is as to what the mayor mentioned before during the borough administrator's budget presentation. I'm really glad that the council is considering adopting a resolution establishing budgetary guidelines during the coronavirus pandemic. And then another resolution, which is on our consent agenda, which provides for a grace period for the payment of second quarter 2020 taxes, in line with Governor Murphy's executive order number 130. The resolution establishes a grace period for the payment of the second quarter 2020 real property taxes until June 1st, 2020. So any second quarter real property taxes paid not later than June 1st, 2020 will not be subject to charge. Oh, yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Elsie, you're muted. There we go.
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to thank Councilman Fine for bringing the idea forward for the budgetary constraints, and we worked on them. They include moratoriums on non-essential hires and a very strict monitoring of the budget. A vote, yes.
Councilman Hale?
I vote yes. I just, one small, on the delay for property, was it May 29th or June 1st? Josh just mentioned June 1st, and I just want to make sure we have the dates right. I thought originally it was May 29th, not June 1st?
So I believe that that's what we originally did. We were ahead of the game with the leadership of our mayor. But once the executive order came out and we were able to extend that to June 1st.
Okay.
Decided.
I know originally it was the 29th. I just wanted to make sure that it was the correct dates were out there, so.
Yeah, the governor added two dates to what we originally had. And I believe it's May 31st?
June 1st.
June 1st?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to point out, I don't know if it matters, so I'm just pointing it out, that item 15, the grace period reso, is not on consent. That's a separate vote. I just didn't want everybody to get confused when you called for a vote on it. Josh jumped the gun.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I vote yes on the consent agenda, and we'll vote yes on.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, so Josh, I empathize with you, because I also thought 15 was in the consent agenda. So it does get confusing when it's handled electronically versus in person. Okay. The resolution number 15 that we've been talking about is the resolution providing a grace period for the payment of second quarter 2020 taxes. And again, what I do want to let everyone know is that we, as a governing body, were quite happy to see that Governor Murphy followed the lead of Highland Park, Matouchen, and Edison in extending second quarter grace periods for tax payments. I don't know what's going to happen with third quarter. We're already starting to talk about that. But this extension is going to certainly help our residents, at least in the short term. So now, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution providing a grace period for the payment of second quarter 2020 taxes?
Don't move.
Second. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Elsie?
I said yes.
Oh. Do you come through on my end?
It was the wind in the palm trees. We couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're about to enter our second public comment session. Each speaker gets three minutes, as we usually do. And this session can go till 9:00 PM, at which point we'll have a conclusion and get into our work session. If you would like to speak, again, I remind you to either raise your hand by pressing the star nine key on your phone keypad, or if you're on a computer or smart device, select the raise hand button. Borough Administrator Hovair will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your name, first name, last name, as well as your address. Again, if you'd like to speak about a topic, any topic at all, please press star nine or raise your hand.
Well, we have some quick, quick on the draw members of the public. First up, Matt Hirsch, and I think I know who it is, but let's, it's really him.
Hey, everyone. It's Matt Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. Thank you for keeping local government Zooming these days. I miss, I wish I were there in person. I miss being out in public. I just had, thank you for, I had a quick question. Thank you for passing the budgetary guidelines during coronavirus pandemic. But I just had a question about kind of when these, when these conditions improve. Is, I would suggest that maybe we want to go by what the governor sets regarding the public health emergency. If that's, if this is in effect until, for example, the public health emergency or state of emergency is in effect. Because right now, it seems, you know, it seems pretty discretionary, and you may find yourselves in a position where you do need to hire someone who's not essential. So that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt. That's a good point. Anybody else?
Yes, we have a couple other hands I see. Next up, this time for real, Charlie Cravatill, please name an address.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Charlie Cravatill. I'm a resident of New Brunswick here on Sedam Street. And I'm very concerned about voting rights. You know, as a Democrat, I want to protect and expand the right to vote and make sure that all the offices that are currently elected remain elected. And I wanted to speak to Councilwoman Foster Dublin about the bylaws and constitution of the Middlesex County Democratic Organization. I know she serves on that committee. And the committee has recommended changes that will disenfranchise members of the party in terms of electing the county committee. This is a very severe change, one that would permanently take away elections going into the future. And I wanted to ask her about her experience on that committee and how they came to those conclusions, and whether all the members of the committee were in agreement about those changes. And, you know, why is it necessary to cancel those committee elections that are not scheduled for this summer, but instead for next summer? And certainly strikes me as really outrageous to not only cancel those elections, but to cancel them all the way through to 2023 and double the length of the county committee members' terms. I know this is a decision the Highland Park Democrats made the right choice and came out against it. But I'd like the councilwoman to explain why Hook recommended these changes and what her stance is on it, respectfully, Councilwoman.
If I could, Charlie, I hear your concern. But before Elsie speaks, I just need to ask our attorney, since this has to do with the Democratic Party, are we allowed to talk about politics here at a council meeting?
Madam Mayor, I think the answer is no. Certainly, the issues are real, and it involves the Democratic Committee organization and a vote. And I would suggest that perhaps this caller take it up with Councilwoman Foster Dublin separately and not on the agenda of the borough.
Well, I would respectfully suggest that these are voting rights that we have. These are offices that are statutory. They are enshrined in the law. And when people go to vote in the primary, whether they're Democrats or Republicans, they have these committee seats on the ballot. And I think that, you know, if I were recommending such a change, you know, I would, I would, I would want to defend it. And so I hope that she'll have a defense for it and want to give that defense right here for all who are listening. I don't think there's anything wrong with her answering my respectful questions tonight, and I hope she'll answer them.
But as I understand the question, you're asking the councilwoman to explain the rationale behind the Democratic Committee's vote on these items which are important. I don't disagree with that. But I don't understand, I don't understand having her spend the time during a borough council meeting doing that, what that has to do with the local government.
Again, she has been appointed to a committee, and her title as councilwoman is on the emails that folks got saying she's on this committee representing our interests. And her proposal, her committee's proposal, maybe she doesn't agree with it, but I think this seemed to be a unanimous agreement of these 10 party leaders, to take away my rights, take away my rights to vote for my local representative, take away my right to run for that office if I want to next year in my neighborhood here. So it's not, I don't usually come to your council meetings in Highland Park, but I'm here tonight because I'm standing against this proposal to take away my rights. And I'd like to hear directly from the elected official who is proposing that, why that's necessary, and why, quite frankly, the coronavirus is being used as an excuse to take away our democratic rights.
So I have to defer to my borough attorney, Charlie, on this. I, you know, many of us have been talking about what you've brought up. I'm a little uncomfortable talking about democratic issues, democratic party issues in the context of the council when we're, I've been, always been told we have to stay away from the political end of things. So I do hear what you're saying about the sense that some, you know, some rights have been taken away, so to speak. But I don't think it's appropriate to discuss democratic party politics, which is what this really is, at a council meeting, to discuss borough issues. There's just too much of an overlap, and you know how I feel about the ick factor stuff. It makes me feel a little bit ick when I start talking about political issues during a nonpartisan council meeting. So, you know, I'm sure Councilwoman Foster Dublin would be happy to talk with you about it. And, you know, there can be public discussions about it, just not in, as part of a council meeting. And maybe you and she, or whomever, can talk about how to make that happen.
Sure. So again, I just. So, again, I just, just don't think of this as politics. This is a voting rights matter. The rights of voters are being taken away, and I think that's something that, as uncomfortable as it might be, ought to be discussed by anyone who's concerned about voting rights, no matter what party you're in. And so, you know, if she would like to say anything, I'd like to hear from her. If not, maybe she could give me her phone number, or we can, we can continue the conversation later, but, you know, I, quite frankly, I do think this is a public interest, voting rights matter, regardless of party, and I'm not being political about it. I'm not, I'm not advocating for one party or the other, not saying who people should vote for, but I am saying I'm against having my rights taken away, and I'd like the person who's proposing that to address why they are proposing that.
Okay. Charlie, this is Elsie. You have sent emails, you have sent your comments, your concerns and questions that you have to the Middlesex Democratic Committee. I would prefer to handle all those issues in that forum. We have heard from you on a number of occasions. We receive your communication. If you choose to speak with me offline, you can do so, but this is not the forum for it.
For the record, I have emailed the parliamentarian of your party numerous times. I have texted him, I have called him, I've left messages for him, I've sent emails to his work email, and I've gotten zero response, not a single response. So I'm glad that someone's gotten my questions, but I still haven't gotten any answers. So that's why I'm resorting to coming to you, the member of the committee who's proposing this. So how can I get answers? Can I have your phone number or your email address to communicate with you directly, or would you like to just answer the questions right here, right now, and put it for all to me?
Charlie, I think I hear the councilwoman saying she's happy to talk with you. Elsie, I think her email contact.
Is fosterdublinhp@gmail.com. You're welcome to contact me there.
Okay. I hope I'll get more responsive responses than I have from Mr. Bander. I considered him a friend, and it was really, I just think the whole way this has been handled has been, quite frankly, disgraceful, and I don't say that lightly. This is, this is not being done appropriately. This is being rushed through in the middle of a public health emergency, and it is highly dubious, and I applaud the Highland Park Democrats for being brave enough to take a stand against it, and I hope that you will look at what they have said and come out against this, because even if, even if you thought it might be a good idea before, I think the general public is against it, and it's, it's an infringement on people's rights for no good reason, and it's using this public health emergency to seize more power. When people ran for committee in 2019, they ran for two-year terms, and that's how it was supposed to be, and now they're, you know, these recommendations seize an additional two years retroactively, and that's the most disturbing part of the proposal, but really, the process has been flawed, and it's evidenced by the fact I haven't gotten any answers from the person who's supposed to be providing them. And to be fair, this is the first time I'm confronting you about this, really, but Mr. Bander has been non-responsive to numerous inquiries, and he was the person who was stated as the point of contact. So I've got to, got to object to the process here. I'm using my, the limited power I have to speak up tonight and raise this issue. I know it makes some people uncomfortable, but I'm going to be on the record as being against taking away people's right to run for this office and to vote for this office in 2021, and I encourage everyone to reach out to their county committee members and urge them to vote no on those recommendations in tomorrow's meeting. Thank you.
Charlie, you have all rights to do so. That's what, the things that I love about living in this country as an immigrant, coming here, this is what I, one of the things I love about living in the U. S. that we all are entitled to our opinion, our thoughts, our suggestions, and we can bring them to our elected leaders and voice those opinions, and then the appropriate steps should be taken. Thank you for calling.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, are there any other comments?
We have a few other hands. I'm going to call on Robin Lowenstein. If you could restate your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Robin Lowenstein, 116 South Fourth Avenue. At the last council meeting, I pointed out that the Public Safety Committee report was missing the critical fact that the Highland Park First Aid Squad suddenly reduced their hours. There are 168 hours in a week, and for two years, the First Aid Squad was in service for 108 of those hours and begging the council for more. I thought that the residents should have been made aware that the squad currently guarantees an ambulance for only 30 to 36 hours per week. They're providing crews three nights a week and nothing on the weekends. I say this because at the last meeting, the mayor said she was sure that a complete report would be given tonight, and that didn't happen. At the same meeting, Councilwoman Foster Dublin's response, of course, after I was already shut off and done, because, you know, we can always get our last word in if we're on the council, I quote, "With COVID-19, the hospitals are stretched. All the first aides are stretched. We can see that yesterday FEMA came in to help the hospitals here in the state, and they're at Robert Wood Johnson because of the demand." The councilwoman said the Highland Park First Aid Squad has been answering calls during the day. I think the council, the committee chair people should really be clear on their facts before they're giving reports. The squad has not been answering daytime calls. Their reduced hours are not because COVID is stretching them. Our squad has not been inundated with COVID calls. Their reduced hours are a combination of losing 40% of their senior writing members, and the members that remain have stopped taking more than one duty night per week, as we always did. I personally believe, I think the town needs to know that. I personally believe that, that the EMT and paramedic who came from Arkansas to our state, I think they're heroes. I really, I really, I'm eternally grateful to people who are willing to do that. I just think it's sad that with neighboring cities that could really have used their help, you know, New Brunswick, in big trouble, that they needed to sit in Highland Park to answer eight calls for the week, particularly at a time when people who are ordinarily at work during the day, right now, they're home and they're available. That was a very sad use of resources. And my last point that was also very notably missing from the public safety report, according to the website of the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department, the position of fire chief is currently listed as vacant. My understanding is that the position is being filled by a paid borough employee. So I'm sorry that I am coming on with these long comments, but the reports are just completely, they're incomplete. It's just a cheering squad. These are the great highlights. Nobody tells about the full facts, and the mayor told me last week, and it's on tape, that we'd have a full report this week, and now you have a full report.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions?
Yeah, there's one other hand raised. The name is callinuser underscore one. So I'm going to ask whoever that is to please state their name and their address, and hopefully not Zoom bomb us.
Hello? Hello?
Your name? Yes, please state your name and where you live.
Is that me?
Yes, you.
Mohammed, hi. Hi, I'm sorry. I don't know why it came in like that. My name is Mohammed Radwan. I live on, Mohammed Radwan, I live over on Jackson Avenue in Edison. I'm calling in today for Councilwoman Foster Dublin. Councilwoman, I actually put, I actually put some time in today. I was going to put, put a lot of thought into what I wanted to say about this because it really bothered me, but after hearing what just went, the conversation that you had with Mr. Cradaville, I really, you know, my father is an immigrant. He came to this country in 1981, and it took him almost 20 years to become a citizen, 20 years to be able to vote, and it gave him a lot of, it gave him a lot of, you know, because of where he came from, it was, it wasn't easy for him. And after what you just said, and what, you know, about loving this country, I really hope you, you think about that when you, tomorrow night, and moving forward, because to take away our rights is undemocratic, is, and is an absolute disgrace to our party, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Borough Administrator, are there any other?
I do not see any other hands raised. I think you can move forward.
Okay. So given that we're all sitting in our homes, do we, can I have a motion to not have our five-minute recess?
No move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we'll have their hands raised.
Oh, there are. There are two more people with their hands raised.
They raised them after we moved forward. I would ask for advice on that, how to handle.
Yeah, Council, Matt, can I please do this properly? Counselor, can we, can we go back to let the people who came in later speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator.
Okay. Thank you for whoever caught that. I did not, I turned away, and the hands were raised when I looked away. The person whose phone ends in 1209, if you could please state your name and your, where you live.
Pardon me?
You're on.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Oh, well, I was very surprised. I was trying to figure out how I could raise my hand.
You can get out.
How that works. I guess I did. I just kept pushing buttons and hoped for the best.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Catherine Hunt. I'm over in 120, well, I'm in Monroe Township. I hope that helps. And I'm a committee woman over there in Monroe Township, and I just wanted to speak to our, my fellow councilwoman here, Elsie Foster Dublin, and just tell her, I was trying to speak out at the last meeting, and I never got a chance to be called on, and if she's able to bring this to the attention, then perhaps we can have another discussion, you know, another call and discussion, because I felt like not everybody got a chance to be heard. And I oppose this attempt for people who are seated in offices that they were elected to, to raise, to extend their term limits when they're in office. It just seems, it just, I would.
Can I just ask you a question? Are you calling about Highland Park situations?
No, I was calling about the, this, see, you're a member of the Constitution and Bylaws Committee, and I have not been able to talk to anybody who is.
I'm sorry.
So I'm just hoping that, yeah, I hope you can carry that.
This is a Highland Park Borough Council meeting? This is not a Democratic Committee meeting of any sort at all? It's a borough council meeting, and I don't think you've participated in the Highland Park Borough Council meetings before?
Attended before. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, now I can be heard. Yes, I have attended on another couple of occasions, and you have a beautiful meeting place there, too. But yes, I just, I wanted to reach out to Elsie in particular, just because I wasn't able to speak up anywhere, and I didn't know where I could get my point across, so.
I'm sorry for cutting you short, but this doesn't appear to have anything to do with the running of Highland Park, and Elsie, I'm sure, as she just gave one of the, a previous speaker her email address to reach out to her, I'm sure she'd be happy to share information with you so that you can speak directly to her, but I have to keep this going for, this is the Highland Park Municipal Council meeting. It's not a Democratic Committee meeting. So, Elsie, do you want to give this caller your email address again?
Catherine, you can reach out to me at fosterdublinhp@gmail.com. That's fosterdublinhp@gmail.com.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator, is there another?
There is one, I believe, last caller as of now. We have one hand. The last four digits, 5406. Please state your name and your address you are on.
Hi, Cristo, Edison, New Jersey. I just wanted to say I could.
I just need your address, please. We need your specific address.
Oh, Cristo, Edison, New Jersey, 14 Fox Road.
Okay, thank you.
Am I recognized now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. I support the librarian, the librarians, the police, and the Highland Park teachers. They're always doing good, especially the police officers and librarians. They're very nice. I want to denounce the Councilwoman Dublin for being a part in changing the MCDO bylaws. I want to also denounce, there was a previous speaker on here before, and according to Robert's Rules of Order, he has the floor, she's not supposed to be interrupted, and you guys kept, I understand you guys didn't like the topic that she was discussing, but at the same time, she did have the floor, she did have her minutes to speak, and I felt like you were, you were rushing her along, and I don't appreciate that. That's very undemocratic.
So thank you for calling in. I just want to make it clear that the Borough Council does not represent any democratic organization. We are elected officials to serve the municipality, so, you know, and you're, you're welcome to talk to us at any time about anything that has to do with Highland Park, but we cannot get involved in politics here at a council meeting, and I'm going to ask my borough attorney to just confirm or, or not what I'm saying. It's my understanding.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
So if you'd like to talk with us about the police or anybody else you just mentioned, we're happy to hear from you, but we can't talk politics at a, at a non-democratic committee meeting. Borough Administrator, are there any other speakers?
I'm going to speak more slowly and say no. We do not appear to have any hands raised at this time. Oh, gosh, 5406 has raised their hand again. They did not, I asked for guidance.
Ed, I think she's asking you.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, we, we basically opened up these last calls, which did not occur during the appropriate time on the agenda. So I would say you've opened it up long enough. I think you ought to move on to the rest of your agenda.
Well, I do want to say, though, that I appreciate that, Ed, and I would, you know, generally agree with you, but I, if this caller is calling about Highland Park municipal concerns, I think we should know that before we say, you know, I'm not going to talk political issues here.
Right.
I don't think that's appropriate, but if this caller has something to say specifically about the municipal government or any bodies within Highland Park Borough, you know, then I think we should be able to hear what the person has to say, correct?
Isn't, isn't this the same caller who just, I'll ask Terry, because she's keeping track of the phone numbers, but isn't this one of the most recent callers that did get into the topics we're not talking about? Is he calling back?
I believe so. He raised, or assuming it is, this gentleman raised the hand again. I don't know, I can't tell as to why.
Okay. Well, Madam Mayor, if you want to pick them up, and then we'll find out what its topic is.
Okay.
All right. Once again, I guess, number 5406, I've already lost your, your name on my notes. Please restate your name and your, where you live.
Cristo, Edison, New Jersey, Fox Road. I just want to say I was prematurely muted. As soon, as soon as another person came and spoke after me, I was muted, and my three minutes were not up.
Okay, I'm sorry. We can hear anything you have to say about Highland Park as a municipality or any of our departments. We cannot talk politics at a municipal council meeting, so.
I have something to say. I have something to say, though. I just wanted to let you know on the record that I was prematurely muted. Can I continue speaking about Highland Park matters?
Yes, please.
Okay. Like I said, like I said earlier, the librarians and the police, they're, they're always good, okay? I would like the Highland Park Town Council, because it's over 100 years, the Greek-Armenian genocide that happened, and I would like the Highland Park Town Council to recognize, yes, the Greek-Armenian genocide did happen, people did die, and Turkey is. people did die, and Turkey is murderers, also that the Holocaust did happen, because there are a lot of historical revisionists that they like to rewrite history. So I just want the Highland Park Town Council to say, yes, the Greek Armenian genocide did happen, Turkey are murderers, the Holocaust did happen in Europe in World War II, and Constantinople in Cyprus is Greek, Kosovo is Serbia, Crimea is Russia, and Kashmir belongs to India. I would like the Highland Park Town Council to acknowledge everything that I just mentioned. And also, I have seen the Highland Park Mayor, I believe her name is Mittler, and opposed her with Will De Diaz of Perth Amboy Mayor and Mayor Ryman of Carteret. And I just want to say, the Perth Amboy Mayor, Will De Diaz, she was in support of firing of a healthcare whistleblower, and she's a drunk. And Mayor Ryman of Carteret is a very well-known alleged sex predator who grooms and goes after underage children. And I would like Ms. Mittler, because she was on a poster with both of them, to denounce them. And at the same time, I don't like the person, how you treated the person before me, and I don't like how I was treated and my, my time was cut short because even though if you don't like what I'm saying, I still have the right to say what I'm saying in my, in the time that's allotted to me. And I just want to add, I, I don't want you to consider this as a callback. I want you to consider this as a continuation of my previous time. And at the same time, I just want to say, you know, I'm, I don't like the way, I'm disgusted the way.
I'm in well over three minutes combining the two, two allotments, just to let you know, Mayor, I have been tracking.
Okay, okay, thank you caller. Okay.
Quickly, there are no hands raised. No, just kidding. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then let's move on to the work session items where no formal action will be taken. Item number one, Water and Sewer Operations RFP update TJ.
I'll be brief because I covered it inadvertently when I was talking about the water and sewer budget previously. Just, just reiterate, we should know hopefully by the end of this week if, how the responses to our RFP went for the contract operator. I'll be working with Phil via our Evaluation Committee and the Public Works Committee so that we can hopefully have a recommendation one way or the other, teed up for the next council meeting. So that's the timeline we're on, and there'll be more to come.
Thank you. Phil, you're next with walking, running path. I know you discussed that earlier as well.
Yeah, basically, I would have nothing to add at this point. We have a number of options on the table. We're trying to be creative about it. One of the big issues, we heard discussions about the possibility of closing roads. We don't really have manpower to close roadways, although I've thought of some alternatives is what, to do that, to have at least some routes primarily to the park. These are all very, very early stages. The 5K route is a little more discussed. The chief and co-chair of SWAC and Borough Administrator that have all been discussing these alternatives will try to have more conversations this week and actually have some recommendations, if not to put into place before the next meeting, then happen next meeting.
Okay, Matt, you have a question?
I just had a thought that, you know, from time to time, people do block parties. And, and that's a little bit of a different, it's not a walking route, but to the idea of people needing to be able to get out and not having a yard to do it and having a space, it's not exactly the same thing. And I know, Phil, you've been working hard on the, on doing walking stuff, but maybe one thing to also consider is encouraging people to do block party permits or to have a block party on a, on a weekend of something like that. That might be another alternative to consider.
I, I, as you know from my line of work, I have all the executive orders hanging on my wall in my home office. One of the problems with that, of course, is the, the governor's continuing concern about social gatherings. My thought was more along the lines, and this is yet to be discussed, you know, with our full group, is to possibly use some of the streets adjacent to the parks as more of a funnel where you eventually reach a place where you don't have to worry about traffic. But as I say, the big, the big issue we have is the manpower to do that, even if we say we're only going to do it on Shabbos and on Sunday. It has to be discussed, but that is, one of the, one of the other suggestions that's been floating around is to look at a limited road closure. We know we can't close the 5K route, you know, twice a week for people to walk, you know, for five or six hours. It's impossible. But there are some alternatives to do, to do that, not just a block party, but maybe use some of the roads as a siphon into the parks we have to talk about.
And Rick, are you still on the line?
He's muted.
Give him a chance to, he hasn't been called on yet, so give him a chance to get to his mute button.
Hey, everybody, I'm here, yeah.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Chief.
I would like to add that this is going to be a part of discussion in the Public Safety Committee as well.
Yeah, and Chief, I'm asking for you to hear this. You know, I know in the past, we've talked a little about this and you had concerns about road closings, but you can hear that residents are asking about it, and Councilman Hale just has asked about it. So it is something that I think is important for you to start thinking about. Can we at all make this possible? So I'm glad to hear Elsie's going to be discussing it in public safety.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Phil?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Phase Two microgrid grant application to BPU, before Terry gets started. You all know how important a microgrid is to our municipality, especially after what happened after Sandy. We did make it through the first round of grants, and now it's time to start looking at the second round. And now I'll turn it over to Terry.
That's basically it. We have a Phase One study that shows that we have a concept that can work from a technological standpoint. This would give us funding to fully explore how to set up a microgrid that would essentially allow for borough operations to have power in the event that the PSENG grid is down. And so there's a variety of techniques. The report was shared with you a year ago, probably at this point. But essentially, this second phase of funding would allow us to drill down on some of the engineering as well as with how we would set it up economically, like how, how would we pay for this? As well as any regulatory things that we'd have to get resolved. So our hope is, our desire is to have a second round application submitted. I believe the deadline is later this month. We would like to put a resolution on for next council meeting in support of the application as well as naming Gable Associates through a co-op, which we had done previously, to provide the environmental, I mean, the engineering consulting, energy, E, it was an E word, I couldn't grab it. The energy consulting services we need to submit the application and work with the engineering firm on that. So we didn't want to surprise you with that next week, if we want, or in two weeks, and just, and if there are any concerns, we'd want to know that. I did confirm for Phase Two, there are no matching municipal monies. So at this point, you know, this would be, if we were awarded, this would give us the space to really try to figure out how to make this work in Highland Park.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions on that? Okay. I'm, I'm thinking that rather than do our regular goals at this point, if any council people would like to update us on any COVID-19 work that's being done by any of your committees, this might be a good time to do that. I see Matt wants to, Phil already spoke about the route that he's been working on. So Matt, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, two things. One of the things that, that we're hearing from some of the businesses in town is actually that their part-time employees aren't coming back because the benefits that they're getting as a result of the COVID-19 unemployment insurance are actually better than the paychecks that they were getting. And so I've heard from a few businesses that they, they literally have openings for part-time, you know, employees. And I don't know what, if we have a mechanism for, for funneling folks to our businesses, you know, who, who need part-time employment. And so I just wanted to let people know that, you know, there are some, and, and I'll tell you what I did is, is I reached out to Ashton at the, at the teen center to see if there are any of his kids or seniors, you know, who are of working age that might be able to do that or want to do that. And I think that if there are other avenues like that, I know that there are some businesses that certainly could use it because they're actually having a tough time getting part-time employees. So I just wanted to let folks know that.
Yeah, Matt, maybe speak with Harry about some way of creating awareness of the job openings that exist in town because we certainly have a lot of folks, I know many have reached out to me, who are, have to go on unemployment now and are not happy about that. So if you could reach out to Harry to try to work on some form of communication or even a job search kind of thing for local businesses and residents, that would be great.
Okay.
I suggest that maybe you could reach, put something on the Main Street website and also the library might be a good place to.
Library is a very good place.
The Main Street is, will have something up shortly in the library as well, so.
Good, excellent.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have one more, sorry. I don't know where we are in the process of this, but I just wanted to let the council know that. And Terry, I hope, I'm not trying to jump a gun or anything like this, but I know that DCA has been sort of thinking about different guidelines for community development block grants and how they might be able to use, be used in different ways. We don't have that guidance yet from the state, but I think it might be something that we're going to consider at some point. We do have community development block grants that are used for different things. We, there might be flexibility in how those are used. And I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that might be something to consider down the road, so.
Yeah, and also, I was talking with the county today, and I mentioned to Terry that they're starting to get some of the funds in from the federal cares package. And they're going to be distributing the funds the way they do the CDBG funds with, as you mentioned, less restrictions on how CDBG funds could be used.
And so let everybody know, I've been, I've been, we've been exploring that, trying to get some guidance and some ideas, particularly with relating to Matt's bucket on economic development and how it might be reallocated or deployed to support businesses downtown. So I've, we have been looking at that, and we do have some flexibility. The, the extent of that flexibility hasn't been well articulated yet.
Right.
And Stephanie, you and I have spoken about, once the restrictions are listed, lifted, putting together a memorial through the Human Relations Commission to everyone in Highland Park.
Yes, and they, I communicated that with them, and they will start the planning on that once it's, it has just been discussed loosely via email.
Okay, so for the benefit of the other council members, what we're talking about is whether you lost your life to COVID or not during this period, you died alone without any memorial services. And so what we're hoping to do is recognize those folks who did pass away in Highland Park during this time in a way that they should have been recognized but couldn't, couldn't have been.
Yeah.
Okay, Elsie, did you have anything you wanted to talk about COVID-wise?
Okay, it's just that ever since COVID hit us here, we have been, every morning at 9:00 AM, we have a group that meet. And the group consists of the schools, EMS, police, fire, community service, construction and health, Department of Public Works, the Public Relations Committee, the SER team, and also our BA with the mayor. And we meet with Jim Polos, he EMS, and we go over everything that happened the day before. We have gotten numerous, we have gotten numerous supplies in, and Jim Polos has been instrumental in helping us securing the supplies and getting us the, as the EMS coordinator for the borough. He's been very instrumental in getting us the resources from ambulance services to PPPs to hand sanitizers and all that kind of stuff in his position that he volunteers for, for our borough. He's been quite instrumental in getting us a lot of services. So just to let everyone know that these meetings happen every morning at 9:00 AM. And when we first started out, it was two hours, and now we're down to a nice half an hour because things in our borough have been very stable, from the schools all the way down to our BA. Everything has been stable and it's, it's been running quite smoothly. And we have a report that we put together every morning, and we, and Harry, through Public Information, will share that information. Anything that needs to be shared will be shared through Harry, through his Public Information team. So just to keep you in the loop of what's going on with all of the public safety or all of the borough departments.
Thank you. And Josh, do you want to talk about any of your programs? Mute, mute, mute.
Sorry, especially during this COVID-19 pandemic period, I just want to let everybody know, and to Elsie's point, that our committees and commissions are doing their best to meet. So for example, this coming Monday evening at 7:00 PM, the Recreation Advisory Committee will be meeting. I'm sure one of the topics will be summer camps and what will be, borough will be dealing with that. We've had virtual exhibits being put together by the Arts Commission. I want to shout out to John Marin. And I know from today's email that Pandora Scooter, who heads up the Arts Commission, that we're going to be having a meeting to discuss future projects on next Thursday at 6:00 PM on May 14th. So even during this hard time, we're doing the best we can to meet and to plan for good projects.
Yeah, the Arts Commission also has the face mask contest going on.
So I just want, I just want to correct, correct that for a second. It's not the Arts Commission. It's, but it's related. It's, but it's, and Council President George could probably tell me if I'm getting this right, but it's the HP Arts Collective that's been putting that together. There's some overlap there, but it's, it is a different organization.
Okay, thank you.
They're, they're often confused, but it is the Arts Collective, the private loose organization of artists in town that we put the program together after we coordinated with Ms. Baloo at the Food Pantry and with the other council members and with Borough Administrator.
Okay, thank you.
It's doing very well. Lot of entry and a lot of, lot of collection so far.
Okay, great. And Elsie, your hand was up?
Yeah, I just want to mention that, I neglected to mention before, that Zone Six, they have 15 seniors that will be graduating this year, and they're going to do a virtual graduations ceremony. And because we don't know what's quite going on with the school as now, as it pertains to graduation, you know, Ashton wanted us to do something special for the 15 graduates that's going off to college. And he had a great idea of creating senior bins. And he's looking for items such as linen, sheets, gift, gift cards, towel, washcloth, paper towels, pens, notebooks, et cetera, so we can put into these gift, these gift bins so we can give our seniors who are going off. our seniors who are going off, especially if we don't know what graduation, the normal type of graduation that we would have would be. So this would be something nice. If anyone who's interested in participating, they can definitely reach out to myself or Ashton.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, may I have a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment agreement?
Before you go into Executive, sorry, I would like to schedule a public safety meeting, and I want to know, and the folks on public safety, if they have, they want to keep the same Wednesday schedule, and if we could do it at 8:00 AM, or you would prefer to do it at 10:00?
Wednesday's okay, but it has to be, I think we were doing it at 8:30.
And we have a standing 9:00 AM COVID meeting, so that would clash. So we need to make some adjustments, so it has to be earlier or later?
I can't do later, because I'm working remotely for the, you know, for work from 9:00 till 5:00 or 6:00.
Can we do 7:30?
I can, sure.
I can do either. You can?
Well, Elsie, just to let you know, the one that's already scheduled is for Tuesday, the 12th, so are you proposing to move it to the Wednesday?
I thought somebody had a problem with Tuesday. Phil, is Tuesday good for you?
Yeah, Tuesday's fine. I thought we swapped it from Wednesday till Tuesday because of some other conflicts with some other meetings.
Yeah, so are you suggesting we start it earlier at 7:30, though?
Tuesday, then, at 7:30.
Okay.
Thanks.
It'll hurt, but I'll do it.
Someone text me to make sure I'm awake.
Okay, now, are you done, Elsie?
Yeah, I'm done, I'm leaving things alone now.
Okay, may I have a motion to go into Executive Session for 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment agreement?
So moved.
And members of the public, we're going to ask you to leave now, and then if you don't, we're going to kick you out. Sorry. Emma, can you assist with that?
Yep.
So stay tuned, and when Emma gives us the green light to proceed. And don't forget to hand over.
We'll have to get Joe in here.
He's there, he's waiting, we ought to un-shy him, he's got his video muted, but he's there.
They're clear, I think.
Well, Emma's got to do, no new people can come in, there's a lockout process.
Hold on, let me one second.
It's the first time we had attendees to boot.
Did I continue recording?
No.